Well, I show 7:00 PM, so let's begin the meeting by all rising and pledging to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Today is February 8th. Still no appreciable snow in the village, so we're liking that. And it seems like maybe about four miles east of us, they're getting something, but our snow removal and snow labor budgets be nicely protected at the moment. We shouldn't say it too loud or knock on wood or something because it might haunt us in March, but welcome. It's actually, being a number guy, today is February 8th of the year 2016. Two times eight equals sixteen, so when we're looking at budget numbers and things, we look for formulas and just so you know that all.
Okay.
A little numerology. Last week I was ill. I called midday and I thanked the deputy mayor for filling in and running the meeting. I was still not quite better, as you can might hear, but getting there. It's, I think, designed really to hibernate in the winter, but here we are in February and we're running meetings. Anyway, I thought what we do is, after calling me into order, which we've done, let's approve some minutes and then we might break the order. We have the Bard students here again, we'll get them out as quickly as we can and then we can do our regular business. We had, let's see, in this case, since Brent ran the monthly board meeting, I let him be the editor in chief on that one. He did get through that.
That took some cooking.
There was a precursor, follow-up to a public hearing before the last meeting, which, again, Brent ran and he notes on that would be better than edited by you folks. I went back for the January 21st workshop. I read through those, so I updated them and made them where I saw they could be. Do you have any other additions, alterations on the other minutes that I was not partying to?
Yeah.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the three woke up sets? There's the workshop of January 21st.
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And like we said as we were pledging, I've got a vacant chair next to me. Jen called in sick this morning, so she's not able to make it. She did send her report, which I'll read that when that comes through. But in the audience, we have Zev and Julia from Bard, and if you'd like to leave us an update. What I would ask, we have a microphone turned on over there, and as we move into this meeting and all future meetings, I think anybody presenting or commenting, we'd prefer to have you there with the microphone so PandaFella can pick you up. And so Zev, you want to say who you are and who you represent?
I'm Zev Folowen, and I'm the student body president at Bard College. Thank you for having me, inviting me here this evening. So last time, or the past few times I've been here, I've talked about Communications Committee, which is, helps to foster communication between Bard students and the Red Hook Village community. So my Communications Committee will be meeting again soon as students return from winter break. Just a few weeks ago, we're getting back into the swing of things. So we're in the process of coordinating and creating a Student Government Monthly Newsletter, which will help us to notify Bard students of events that occur within the village of Red Hook. And simultaneously, we're also working on our Student Government website to kind of create that online presence to really get students to events that are happening really all over. We're also reaching out to music groups on campus regarding, hopefully, having a jazz night for the local community within the village of Red Hook. And in addition to that, we look forward to working more with Bard College administrators and Village of Red Hook officials to continue fostering the Bard and Red Hook, Village of Red Hook community.
Thank you. You could probably leave it on, did you? Thanks, Zev. Does Julia want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
She's welcome to read it.
Thanks. You're welcome to sit for a while, whatever. But what we could do is, we'll move up to the top of our agenda, Department and Committee reports. So we have, I don't know if Cindy, if you all know, but she's now using her maiden name there, Sherella, still a C.C., but we've changed that in our notes and in our presentation board there. She's Cindy Sherella now.
Thank you. Sorry for the spelling. So the Treasures Report is up February 8th. Account balances, general fund, $216,434.67. Water fund, $249,347.75. Trust and agency, $23,883.51. Materials management, $9,379.74. Petty cash, $90.01. Village Green, $3,886.88. Hard Scrabble fund, $2,604.78. Health insurance, $13,991.96. Capitals project is zero, which is what it should be. Monthly expenses, the general fund, $107,042.70. Water fund, $42,044.10. Trust and agency, $23,883.51. And materials management, $2,873.61. And most of our big expenses have been paid. I believe there is one more firehouse payment, small interest payment on the building, and I believe a police vehicle. All the big expenses have been paid.
How are we doing, Cindy, with the, I remember this was a few months ago, with some of the liquid water payments?
Last quarter, I was able, I really counted down on them, and I was able to get, bring it from nineteen thousand, I think, down to two or three.
Wow, it was up as far as nineteen. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah. And last week, I had Aries send out another nineteen thousand dollars worth of past notices.
Okay.
But they're coming in.
Good.
And next quarter, what's not been paid will be reloaded on the tax bills.
And just for a base point, quarterly gross billing is about a hundred and five thousand per quarter, so.
That's a lot.
Anyway, my notes on the budget, twofold. At the beginning of February, we would have been at sixty-six percent of the year, eight over twelve months, according to my calculations. So now's the time we've sent out the budget considerations to the department heads, like we've mentioned, for next year's budget creation, but now we're in what's technically and historically the crunch time for the village of Red Hook. It's the cash flow of the last four months. We do still have revenue coming in, but every department head has to keep an eye and a tab on their budget and so forth. I've spoken to a few of them to remind them of that the past few days. And the test would be, are they sitting at about sixty-six percent or so, you know? So if you guys want to look through that at your leisure, too, that's what we're up to. And then the other part, we'll talk about specifically later, but the deadlines we work with were by February 8th, which is tonight, the department heads had to turn in their budget requests, pie in the sky dreams, real dreams, pie in the sky dreams and so forth, and I do have that from everybody. And then later on, we'll try to pick how we set up our sequence with budget meetings and so forth. We do that in workshop generally and work on the model with the Excel spreadsheets and so forth, so we'll set that up a little more formally later. That being said, is there a motion to accept the Treasures Report?
Some would.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, we could jump, it looks like Mr. Trustee Trapp is next on the list. I guess I should go first because I see my name above that, sorry Jay. To support the police report. And we're reporting out the month of January, of course, 2016. Everybody should have this. For the month, there were 370 incidents, breaks out 271 in the village of Red Hook, 105 in the town of Red Hook, and two in the village of Tivoli. To subdivide that further, traffic tickets were 148, and there was 102 in the village, one parking ticket, and 46 in the town of Red Hook. Arrests were 23, 16 were in the village of Red Hook, and seven were in the town of Red Hook. What's that? No, Trustee Trapp, looks like you are up.
Seems like a pretty big number.
Yes, they are. It's up there.
Okay. Couple of things going on, the Planning Federation, as I talked about last month, we have the spring classes, we're finalizing everything, and we'll be sending out the notices for all the planning and zoning boards. And we also sent out the billing for the communities, for the membership of the Planning Federation, which is a hundred dollars per community, which I think is probably a pretty good deal. We, last year, we decided to forego the billing, so everybody got passed last year on that one, so. Did you find the invoice for that yet, Ed, or you?
I have not. I was telling Jay, look, we have a letter, I'm not saying we didn't get it, but called the woman, Christine, down there at the planning department.
Okay.
Do you remember seeing, we had a letter saying, "Welcome, and here's your bill for the upcoming year," but I didn't see the bill attached. I didn't see it.
The Planning Federation?
Yeah.
It was just a hundred dollars?
Yep, that's all it ever is.
Yeah, it's in the batch.
Was it here? Okay. Because it wasn't attached to my letter, I thought.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so it's here.
Okay, good.
Takes a while, you know, we expect it to be kind of slow coming in, but we do have the classes coming up, and I'll update those as we get more information and we zero in on everything that we have. And Ed stopped by the house the other day, and we explained a little bit about what I sort of hijacked in the last time about that 3D document camera that we're gonna, I'm gonna, like, set the planning board, uh, planning and zoning boards up with so that you can put, basically, any object, you can put a phone, a glass, a water on there, and basically what it does is it does this. It sits up here, transmits it to the LCD projector, and then sends it, it's like an electronic overhead projector that you used to have in school, except it'll do any sort of object, anything you can throw up there. I noticed that it's kind of difficult sometimes to try and get the applicants to send everything in digital format, so if we just have it printed, you can just throw it up on the thing there and it'll show it there, so it's easier for everybody out there to kind of see what you're chatting about. And I'll provide, like, a little laser pointer so people can, you know, be cool, you can zap people you don't like.
Who's gonna operate it?
Um, we're, we're, we're gonna give lessons.
Okay.
He agreed to throw in a training, it's actually his wife who was expert on it.
It's just hooking a cord, a cord, plug it in.
Easy for you.
And we'll, George, we'll get you, okay? We'll get you all tuned up. And we'll train Lara as well, so it'll be easier for you guys to talk about. So that's, that's coming. And in the planning and zoning, the monthly report, there were six building permits issued, one certificate by occupancy, and that was down on Firehouse Lane, the mixed-use buildings. They're finally coming.
Mm.
They're looking pretty good, I think.
Really nice.
Took a long time, didn't it, Brent? Kind of get it out and throw the wringer there, so. They're coming. We had fourteen certificates of compliance issued. Sam conducted four municipal searches, issued two orders to remedy, no stop work, no court appearances, and we have one, there was one complaint issued. Let's see, the planning board had one item of business in front of them, a site plan with conditions at 2129 West Market Street. And the ZBA had a banner night, an interpretation for 3135 West Market, Morgan's Cat Cafe. Had a public hearing on Variance at 30 Prince Street, and variance applications for that particular project were granted that night, so. All of that becomes public record, all of the things that Sam has done. And the money tender for the month of January was $1,724.50. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jay.
Yep.
Okay. Let's see, what we could do, I'll jump to Trustee Norris's report here. And I think I need to dig out my glasses, it's an Excel spreadsheet. It's got a lot of small print. You would all have it there, of course.
Yeah, but it's, it's written.
Hmm? It's written?
It's written.
Oh.
It's written.
In long form? Okay.
Yeah, backside.
Okay. On the actual data sheet, for the month of January, it was 10.39 tons of garbage, 5.67 tons of single-stream recycling, and then ticket sales were $3,487. What I've done with that is trending that out, you can see her average further over to the right of our sheet, 3479, so it's pretty much, $3,400,000 is our average sales per month, so she, that last month was pretty much dead on with the average. If you trend that average, it's coming to $42,000 a year in revenue, and the budget is $45,000, so it's near the budget. Flip to the other side, there's one edit I had to do when she sent this in, I'll read it. It's, "For the month of January, she states the dollars sold in tag sales." And the interesting thing, I, pretty much every week now, I refresh the Natural Food Store with his supply of tags, and he's selling about thirty percent of our tags right now. It's amazing.
He doesn't get mine.
Yeah, he doesn't mark them up or anything, which is good. So hopefully, when people go in, they buy something from him, too, but anyway. It was on the MLK weekend, we had that Community E-Waste Day where it was the town of Red Hook, and the village of Red Hook, and then Bard, the Center for Continuing Education, and the Bard students helped with the electronic waste day over at the town transfer station. Jen has an interesting thing, she said.
Can be seven thousand pounds, right?
I read it, I did get the email, because before the meeting, I had emailed the Bard people who arranged the.
That's fourteen million pounds.
Yeah. You read it, the math? I had emailed the folks at Bard who coordinate with the vendor who takes it away, and it's actually seven thousand pounds, she put seven thousand tons, and Jay said it exactly right, if you didn't pick them up, that was seven thousand tons, it would've been fourteen million pounds, that'd be a bit much, but, so, seven thousand pounds, and the prior two years, we did, I think prior was about twenty-three thousand pounds, if memory is right, and the year before it was near that range, so the good part is, I think, we're knocking back the waste sitting around people's barns, cellars, garages, attics, and so I think, you know, it could be a good sign. And then as far as the vents, Jen's planning the spring roll, spring egg roll, I call the spring scramble. We usually hold that over at the middle school, and our Red Hook PD is pretty active with the library on that. She'll finalize it in the near future. And just an announcement for library patrons, they are renovating, and they've got alternate hours, which tend to be at the end of the business day and 4:30-ish, maybe Brent has it in his report in detail, but they're letting the contractors work during the day, and then there's women's operations waiting in the day. So it'll be the material management report. Yeah, let's see, we could move to the water operations. Mrs. Archuk, are you ready?
Water report for January, during the month of January, the water treatment plant, excuse me, treated 7,936 gallons of water, an average daily use of 256 gallons per day. In January of 2015, the plant treated 6,529,000 gallons, an average of 210,000 gallons per day. During the month of January, the plant used 50 gallons of liquid hyperchloride, an average of 1.6 gallons per day. Three samples were sent to the lab, all three returned negative as resolved. On January 25th, a power surge caused a time-delayed relay to fail within the control system of the water tower's fill pump. The failure occurred after working hours and low pressure was reported at 8:15 the following morning. By 8:25, the pump was manually turned on and the pressure was immediately restored. Also discovered was a problem with the telephone dialer intended to notify the operator when the water in the tower dropped below normal levels. Both problems were resolved and are scheduled for replacement with modern equipment during Phase II of the water project.
Thank you. It's kind of interesting, the average daily consumption, 256,000 gallons per day.
Right.
It's quite a bit higher than last year, 210, and it's actually higher than our rolling average lately, but that's about.
Yes, no.
When people boil snow.
Boil some cars.
What's that?
Boil some cars for.
Oh, okay. Let's see. Yeah, just, thank you, Steve. We could now move into Deputy Mayor Kowalczuk's reports on the various items he updates us on.
The Village Green Committee monthly report, current balances of the related budget accounts are as follows, the community beautification contractual expenses is $2,153.17. The Shea Tree contractual balance is $5,836.27. And the Village Green checking account is $3,886.88. The Village Green Committee Subcommittee Meeting was held on January 13th at the Red Hook Village Building. The 2015 Tree City USA application was completed, and that application's for 2016, and submitted to the Upper Day Foundation. We also received confirmation of this successful submission on the same day, and this was forwarded to the New York Regional Coordinator, Region Two, on January 13th. And again, two bench locations are remaining without dedication plaques, and any resident interested in purchasing one for $125 can notify the clerk's office, and we'll take care of ordering and installing the plaques. The Highway Department lets report, the snow ordinance is currently in effect until March 31st, and this means that no parking is permitted on Village streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and on New York State highways, which are Market Street and Broadway, from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. When snow rise removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any responding law enforcement agency. And all costs associated with vehicle towing and storage will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And this year, vehicles found in violation will be towed and stored by H&amp;M Towing Enterprises at 7309 South Broadway. The fees are $110 towing fee plus a $25 per day storage fee, is or for vehicles not claimed within the first three days. And if you're a car that has been towed, the owners can contact or a police department or the Village Clerk's Office for more information. And also, during winter, the occupant or owner of every building or lot in the village within enjoying sidewalks shall remove snow and ice within 24 hours of a snowstorm. The Village Board may make a decision to remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of $2 per linear foot. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levying. And as I had mentioned, the preliminary budgets and proposals of replacement vehicles and equipment have been submitted to Village Board of Trustees' consideration by the Highway Department for. Street repair projects utilizing the CHIPS funding are currently being prepared for Board of Trustees' consideration. These will be reviewed during the preparation of the Village of Red Hook's fiscal year 2016-17 budget. And no scrap metal was sold during the month of January. So far, for this fiscal year, we've generated $506.61. Since inception, the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $18,984.35 has been generated. And proceeds from this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the Village Highway, Water, and Materials Management Departments. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the Village Clerk's Office or the Highway Department, and we will also pick up scrap metal ton request. The Inter-Municipal Task Force and Red Hook Infrastructure Project, monthly report, the Red Hook Sewer Project, meetings were held on January 8th, 14th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th at the Red Hook Village Building. We reviewed and revised the draft secret part two of the EA F with responses from the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Division of Fish and Wildlife and Marine Resources, and also the New York Natural Heritage Program, the New York DEC Wetlands Mapping, and then environmental remediation, speedy's permit, and speedy stormwater permit, and cultural resources were all addressed in the EA F. And we also reviewed the Red Hook Village Sewer Project with Ellen Driscoll, who's a Bard College Director of Studio Arts, they're doing a project this semester on the sewer project. And we reviewed the New York State DEC intermittent stream standards that require the Red Hook Village to meet limits for discharge from the treatment plant into the Salco Tributary with the village engineers and attorney. And we also had a consultation with our Bama Council regarding, regarding the responses to USDA on referendums and that sort of thing. The Red Hook Water Project Phase II meetings were held on January 8th, 14th, 15th, 20th, 23rd, and 29th at the Red Hook Village Building. We responded to USDA's memo of December 31st regarding contracts 4G and 4E, and we reviewed Water Project Phases I and II with Michael Yonchenko regarding informational video. On January 20th, we had a pre-construction meeting at the Village Building. Representatives from CT Mail, the Village, USDA, New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, Jurgen Construction Group, Gross Electric, and also our Highway Foreman all attended the meetings. And there is a lot of information that was gone over on that, and that's, that's all in the monthly report. And the 2015 Community Valuable Block Grant, the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed and approved the bid results for the sidewalk project. The Department of Planning and Development have also verified that the contractor is eligible to be awarded a contract funded by the CDBG program. Upon execution of the contracts between the Village of Red Hook and Upstate Concrete and Masonry, it's for the winning bidders, a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled prior to the start of construction, and we're hoping to start in April. And this particular grant award will be used to install ADA compliant sidewalks in front of them and on the east side of the Red Hook Firehouse, and to reconstruct sidewalks on the west side of South Broadway in front of Coburn's Laundry and the Dance Center. The 2016 Community Valuable Block Grant, which are the solar-powered push buttons, activated LED signal flashing at four mid-block crosswalks in the village, the reviewing committee has not yet completed their review and selection process for the project recommendations to the Dutchess County Executive. I believe this was supposed to be done mid-December.
Yeah, we usually give, like, a sneak preview.
Yeah, so they're running a little bit late on that. On the Inter-Municipal Task Force side, the task force met on January 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th at the Red Hook Town Hall. New agenda items included assisting the Village of Red Hook and Tivoli with zoning revisions and amendments, and looking at workforce housing provisions. Maps are being prepared by the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for the town of Red Hook zoning amendments for the RD3, historic structures and districts, the TND zoning, and historic resource map. We discussed nursery schools, family daycares, child daycares, alternate care, congregated care, and group homes, uses and the handlets. The Red Hook Town Board anticipates initiating secur and setting a public hearing for the proposed historic structures and districts zoning revisions and amendments. A very busy month with the sewer and the water. The Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both that and our liaisons, and EDC met on January 6th and 27th at the Red Hook Village Building, and we updated the Red Hook Community Kit. We had updates on the Red Hook Community Center, and reviewed the status of the updates revision of the Red Hook business lists, reviewed proposals for uses of the former CBS building on North Broadway, reviewed and the updated status reports on the proposed Red Hook Sewer Project, and updated and organized a new newsletter from the EDC called High Notes, which will be, I think, the first issue's out already, which will be online and addressed to all those people on the Red Hook Business List. And we reviewed the status of the new CBS lighting concerns. And the EDC also welcomed the new Chair, Richard Longback, who is now running the meetings and doing a very good job right now, so. The Community Preservation Fund Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of representing the Village of Red Hook, the advisory committee met on January 12th, 19th, and 26th at the Red Hook Town Hall. We are now in our fifth year, and by law, we have to amend, update, or approve the existing plan. plan, and we are actually adding new categories to be considered, and they include biodiversity connectivities, trails, well-built protection areas, aquifer recharge areas, and the Salt Hill Stream and Wetlands. And we had a talk from Laura Heady from Cornell University about our biodiversity connectivity study, and we're also identifying properties along the headwaters of the Stubby Brook and properties adjacent, and including the Red Hook Village wellfields, both on Firehouse Lane, Richard Abraham's Royal Park, and those east on one ninety-nine. Resources for assistance with the GIS mapping have been identified. We're working with some interns from Bard College to help us with the cataloging of the properties. And we're trying to fund all this work through a Greenway Grant Program, and that's under process right now to the town. And we're being assisted from Sina Cutson to help us identify properties held in conservation easements in the town of Red Hook. And we also discussed the scope of work to amend the CPF project plan by May two thousand and seventeen. The current balance so far, and there's a couple, I think, big increases in revenue that will be coming shortly, there's some two major sales that have happened since this balance came out, but the current balance as of January thirty-first is three hundred and three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents. The Red Hook, Town of Red Hook, Villages of Red Hook, and Tivoli Shared Services Committee, both Ed and I said on that, representing the Village. A Highway Shared Service Steering Committee meeting was held on January fifth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh at the Red Hook Village, Red Hook Town Highway Garage. And Will Labossier, your software consulting associates, reviewed our new hardware and software for the implementation of a Highway Asset and inventory management plan, and that's similar, people who brought you in the city. We reviewed and revised the requests for proposals for professional consultant. Shared services for the following scope of work. Highway Shared Services for the Town of Red Hook and Villages of Red Hook and Tivoli Program implementation will include continued capital asset identification and bookkeeping, and software work with vendor program and municipal staff with intention to move toward GASP thirty-four accounting. Work towards shared administrative options, realignment of purchaser materials, the optimal sharing of staff, vehicles, equipment, maintenance, and storage, capital planning from asset downer for the purchase of new equipment that can be used singularly or by all municipalities, and other cost-effective strategies. The RFP, I believe, went out last Friday. Deadline for RFP submissions and delivery to the Red Hook Village Building is by three o'clock PM on Tuesday, February sixteenth, at which time we'll open. And also, a Northern Dutchess Highway Shared Services meeting was held on January thirteenth at the Myland Town Hall. Dan Stride and myself both attended, and there are representatives from the Town of Northeast, Village of Billerton, Town of Red Hook, Town of Clinton, Town of Myland, Town of Reinbeck, and the Town of Pine Plains. And the committee reviewed equipment that could be shared by the municipalities for Dutchess County Shared Services Grant application. Michael also been in touch with the Village of Reinbeck and the Village of Tivoli to see if there's some equipment that we could share with them. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February seventeenth, at the Myland Town Hall, and I believe Ed's currently putting it up. And the Salt Hill Watershed Community, both Ed and I represent the Village on that. Subcommittee meetings were held on January twenty-fifth at the Red Hook Village Building. Representatives from Dutchess County Cornell Cooperative Extension, Town Supervisor, myself attended, and we looked at the existing activities to support or continue property identification for the Community Preservation Fund Project Plan Amendments, and discussed new activities to promote science-based evidence based on local decision-making policies and plans. And there was a real quick Red Hook Together meeting held on January twenty-first, and we discussed the Red Hook Village Farmer's Market, events and schedules at the Red Hook Public Library, and updates on the Red Hook Town and Red Hook Village projects and initiatives. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Just a little color piece, he was mentioning the Highway Shared Services and the fellow Will Labossier, he's one of the principals in SCA, who's actually a village-based software company that specializes in developing, I call them municipal modules. Right now, our water billing system is with them. And if you recall, about eighteen months ago, we got a grant through the county where our planning and building inspection department are automated with their software, and as part of that, we have a tablet provided to us for a building inspector to use. And then at the last meeting, when Will was training us, we have another tablet that we acquired through the grant funding where it'll help our highway guys identify assets. And we've got this project underway in Phase One of Shared Services where we have identified a lot of our non-fixed assets, but there's still more work to do on that, and then we'll also have to identify more of our fixed assets. CT Mail is working a little bit with us on our water assets, but then there's highway and different things we have to put in there. But I've been experimenting a little bit with the tablet, and the eventual design is if we put up a new hydrant or street sign or whatever, we can actually real-time update GIS, GPS-type locations and values, and it'll also help us in the end on bigger items, vehicles and so forth, we can actually insert repair sequences, expenses that we have that we didn't plan on. And it's an incredible tool. We have to upgrade and get really able to use it, but first we have to get the data in, and that's what Phase Two of the Highway project is. Right now, Red Hook Village is acting as lead agency. The county gave us another eighty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, like Brent was saying, to retain a consultant and further develop the assets and hire a part-time worker who would be actually stationed in the town is the plan, to help enter the data from all the different sources. And now the town has their own more aged software package. We have our data, somebody's got to put it all into this, but that's the nature of that Highway Shared Project right now. Pretty good stuff, though. That being said, let's move, I think we hit committee reports. If I look at my list here, we have Robert Flores at the audience. Let's move to number two on our agenda, sewer seeker status. We circulated digitally Part Two in a negative declaration last week, as Brent read, and I know that all sinks in, but Part Two, we've been working on in conjunction with the public hearings that we're holding. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we had a December public hearing, and then a January continuation. This board voted at the January meeting to close the public hearing in January, which is proper and appropriate, so it's closed. There were a few things that we still had to run down, and Brent cited some of them in his report there, ranging from some DEC, some SHPO, different things, and what that is, there are a lot of technical questions, but it's brought us to the point, in my opinion, that's what we circulated for everybody to read last week, is it looks like we're ready to prepare and announce, finalize a negative declaration, which is a notice of determination of nonsignificance, meaning we've gone through the Part Two, addressed, if you remember, we had, it was ten pages of questions and boxes and so forth. And as Brent said, too, with engineering and council and our input and the public input, we go through all that. And these are the environmental issues, that's, the secret world is the environmental side of the project. So what we could do, there's a couple of steps. Like we said, the public hearing is closed. I'd like to move forward, what this would do is put the secret process behind us, and then we can start moving into funding and different things that we're still working on. It's not the end stage of the game here, but we are working within a timeline where that zero percent interest, we have to have certain things done in a certain format and timeline to be ready to accept that by the middle of two thousand and seventeen, so we're working backwards to get, meaning timeline backwards, not a negative statement, but we're working purposefully to get certain things done to get to that point. So what we have, like I said, we circulated these things because they are rather long, there are a lot of pages, and everybody has a printed copy now. But in essence, we need to talk about, and we'll put a resolution on the floor, but we're resolving that the proposed project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, that we've done the draft, let's see, that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. We've done the Part Two, and then we've come to the conclusion that it's a notice of determination of nonsignificance is warranted, and then what we can do is have some discussion, we can get this resolution on the floor in the record, and then we can talk about it. But it's not a new surprise thing, we've been working on it for at least ninety days meeting, at least since December, as far as with the public hearings, a lot of work has gone into it. So, I don't know, Mr. Trapp, you're our preferred environmental secret reader, would you want to read that resolution into the record, sir?
Absolutely. And it references the NAGD Act that has been prepared here, so.
Okay.
And which resolution is this going to be, is that being two?
Number two.
Okay, resolution number two, two thousand and sixteen, I'll just start at the wherethes and move through those. Whereas the Village of Red Hook sits over a valuable aquifer that provides water for the village residents, town residents, business owners, and farmers, and whereas a vibrant village requires a modern infrastructure, and the Village of Red Hook desires to promote ecological and economic sustainability, and whereas the Village of Red Hook intends to pursue a municipal sewer system in the general business district in contiguous areas as defined in the map of the proposed sewer district available at Village Hall, call it the project, and whereas the Village of Red Hook has developed and submitted engineering reports to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, EFC, for municipal sewer systems serving approximately one hundred and thirty properties primarily in the general business district, which reports to have been approved by those agencies, and whereas the Village of Red Hook has been advised that the projected cost of the project will be four point nine million dollars, and whereas the Village of Red Hook has been granted a zero percent interest loan in, for, in that amount of four point nine million dollars with a thirty-year term from the EFC with a two-year window from July two thousand and fifteen, and whereas the Village of Red Hook is still pursuing other grants and offset options to reduce the borrowing needed in order to reduce the capital costs, and whereas a full environmental assessment form, EAF, for the project dated October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, has been prepared on behalf of the Village, and whereas November ninth, two thousand and fifteen, the Village Board of Trustees classified the project as a Type One action pursuant to seeker and declared its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the action, to which no other agency has objected, and whereas the Village Board of Trustees held a public comment session to elicit testimony from members of the public on potential adverse impacts related to the project on December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, which was conducted to January eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, whereas the Village Board of Trustees has considered the criteria contained in six NYCRR, six seventeen point seven, and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of environmental concern. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook as follows. Number one, the Board of Trustees hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared and adopts the attached notice of determination of nonsignificance. Number two, the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to complete and sign page two of part three of the EAF. Number three, the Village Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to provide copies of the attached notice of determination of nonsignificance to the mayor and all involved and interested agencies, and to the environmental notice bulletin, ENB, for publication. And I think I'll defer to you for the motion and all that sort of.
Okay. So that's the text, and what we could do, Jay read it as text, and somebody put that on the floor in the form of a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
As far as discussion, as always we do in our intro, we do some of the discussion upfront, but there's always room for more afterwards here on the board. It is a very complex process, and you can see in your packets and what we circulated the various forms, and you can see it ranges across that whole environmental spectrum of the impact of the project. I feel comfortable with giving it the full attention it deserved and required. We spent a lot of engineering time, a lot of legal time, and some of that we have through some sewer administration grants just to soften the blow, so it's, that part's taken care of. But I think it's ready, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any other discussions from the board?
No.
So then, I would ask that, it looks like we could do a roll call, which, of course, is absent, but vote on resolution as read to adopt a negative declaration. And just to be clear, it's talking about attached documents, and that's what you've got in the latest versions in front of you, so that's what gets attached. We have a motion in a second. I'll vote yes to adopt the negative declaration. And Mr. Darchuk?
Yes.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Kovalchuk?
Yes.
Okay, so four guesses and an absence, let's say it carries, thank you. Anything else on that, Mr. Engineer, while you're sitting there? That's some of the secret part of it. We got the Bard kids out early, and Robert's sitting there for CT Mail. Why don't we jump to underwater Phase Two, and then we can let Robert move on. Just to put a little, again, documentation on the side of Brent's report, that pre-construction meeting that we had, there were a bunch of people in the room, ranging from the funding agencies to the contractors, meaning Prime Electric and Prime in general, and they're looking to start in March, which is really good news for us. We're looking, he mentioned, we wanted to develop a small informational video that we can put on our website just to tell people what that means. Essentially, it means, in conjunction with Dan Stride and all the people that control the project, we will be closing streets, but local residents can get down any street whenever they need to, meaning it's, if you live on the street, you'll be able to get to your house, you'll be able to get across your driveway, you'll have water, but there will be no local cut-through traffic, and that was a decision we made, like, sometimes you see a sign, road closed, street closed, except for local, and we're going to take the position that local doesn't mean you're cutting to the high school to go down Garden Street. It means if you live on Garden Street and they're working on Garden Street, you can come down as a resident, but it's not going to be, so the main reason is so the construction can happen, because we have a lot of people working traffic light on the side streets, cutting through, so just so, the reason I announced it here for Panda and then the audience is, we'll explain that further in the informational video that'll be linked to our website. But the overall good news is March is not that far away, and the contractor does say, I make a little shirk, but he thinks he can get it done by end of November-ish of the current year, which will lead us to another discussion we'll do on our water rates and so forth, but it's looking like they've done their projects, they've worked with CT Mail a lot, and they'll be starting to work pretty quickly here. That would be the update. Robert, did you have any technical thing you wanted to add on that?
We'll just rail both to answer questions.
Okay. We could do that at the end, well, I won't keep you till the end, but let's see.
Oh, he wants to hang out.
Oh, yeah? The other thing, while we have Robert here and the board, we've tasked, remember back last, I want to say, May-June two thousand and fifteen, we passed that Cross Connection Backflow Prevention Law that we adopted, requires statutory wording from the New York State Department of Health, and inserts in dark code to make certain occupancies comply with proof that they have backflow prevention. Two hurdles we have to consider, we had a flurry when our letters first went out in July, but we're not sure that the parties are all in compliance, so we've tasked an assistant to the Building Department to take the spreadsheet, add it, and get out on the street and remind everybody, because the board was trying to be very conciliatory, and we gave everybody to the end of March two thousand and sixteen, and this is back in June, so we're thinking like a nine-month-ish timeline. The downside is, we don't, and haven't heard from enough people to be sure they're actually moving to comply, so we're going to nudge them a little bit. But it's not my position and thought that we need to penalize people, we just need to get them going, so we might need in a month to consider some softening of the window, but not to give it up forever or give it extended timeline, just something, hey, look, get it done, it's more important to protect the water system than find them, you know, so it's something we have to push on.
Are we considering any? Are we considering any punitive measures, like if we get past some of these time frame weeks?
Well, in the, in the code, there was a punitive, I think at two levels. But again, my thinking is, we did tell them about the process, there was an application they have to fill out and it starts art review and whether or not they really need one and so forth. Not enough have come in and from what Sam tells me, and done it. So we're pushing back with that department saying, hey, look, I see some obligation in that department to go remind folks. And our goal is not to track them into a deadline, it's we're trying to remind them of the deadline and get it compliled so our system is protected. So if you know anybody, you know, we're going to be, this part-time helper's going to be out knocking on doors and reminding folks. So that, just wanted to get on the record too. What we did too, we've been sitting in workshop format for a while, it's known as the Hoffman Farms Project down south of the village in the TND. And we had the workshop, what was that, whatever it was, January twenty-first, I think we had talked about it with some ideas. Brent and I met with Duchess Water Waste Water and Representatives Hoffman and we're looking to get them back this week, February eleventh, at a special workshop. So that notice went out to the board and to the paper and so forth. It's, right now it's still pending and it looks like it's firm to happen, but we'll check, we'll keep you all totally advised. There is some suspicion on my part that it might fall through this week, but I'm not totally sure, but keep it on your calendars. And then, let's see. On a different theme, as we all know, let me just pull up an Excel spreadsheet here. Look up my computer first. This is scary. This is the influence, general budget model, this is not the water budget. I would ask you all to chime in, but I'll describe it again. This, we've been going over in workshop as well. What I created was a spreadsheet. And like we mentioned, phase two, we've been long in the planning and we've all voted on bonding and so forth. Essentially we have to start further gearing up to pay USDA once the project is completed and reaches substantial completion, finally closes in the funding world. And we have a timeline ahead of us. We do know what the principal will cost us. Let me explain that for everybody again. The documents we signed with USDA over here, the loan is capped at three point two-five percent. Over here, the current lending rate through USDA is two point five percent. So we can project, we'll never have to pay more than three point two-five percent interest. If we were to close today, it'd be two and a half. So the, the interest rate is flexing. We can't really guess what it will be in about two years, but, so I'm picking, some of my math down here is how much we would have to raise our budget to get enough money cash flow-wise to get there. So what I built on the bottom half was some models and the board is inclined to do an increase per quarter over the next six to eight quarters instead of bigger bump-ups at the end of the year or, you know, some miscellaneous point or undetermined point a year. And what I had done to make it more, a better interpretation, let me go up here in, in yellow, if y'all can see this, but should I make it bigger for anybody? What these columns are, this is if we increase the current water rate two percent per quarter, what happens to the customer, three percent per quarter, three and a half percent per quarter. And the reason it's important, because we know down here, our current, like I mentioned before, our current quarterly average gross billings is a hundred and five thousand. And if you look at the bottom of the chart, we know we need to get between a hundred and thirty-three thousand, a hundred and thirty-four thousand and about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand new revenue per year by about eight quarters out. And it starts to happen at this timeline here. And if one goes backwards, that's a three percent per quarter increase. So what's happening in this lower column, a hundred and five per quarter increases to a hundred and eight, a hundred and eleven as you go across. And what I built or below it, it's the net increase per quarter than what we're actually putting in the bank when you add the prior quarter's increase and the new quarter. So as you go across, you can see out there, at a hundred and thirty-three, that's what we're going to need. And if you go back, it's the three percent number. Let me just take you up. And that should be about eight quarters out. And just so people know, Cindy might be able to help here, is the project's going to take time to build, it'll be substantial completion, it'll probably be like next spring before it's really done, so to speak. And then when we close on a bond, the money's not really owed to the next fiscal year. So, so we have time to get there, but we have to start planning to get there. And again, the board's heard a lot of this, it's more for everybody on the floor or not in the audience on Panda World. So if you-
Can I just ask, are you going to, like at the end of each budget year, put that in reserve of some sort?
Well, it'd be a fun balance. We could, it probably would be good to, we probably should protect it somehow. It's something that, because it could be, to make a federal reference, it could be like the social security fund, there would be some money there, but I don't think this board would be tempted to raid it, but it would be sitting there. The point is, it's going to be, need to be paid and about eight quarters out. So just for more, what does this mean to me type of thing? When one looks at our water bills, it's a wide spectrum, but the typical person is about seventy-five to eighty bucks a quarter in that range. We have a lot, our fixed income senior to qualifier, fifty-nine dollars, our base rate is sixty-nine dollars. A lot of our people are not just base rate. So we're, as a board, just playing with seventy-five dollars. So if your quarterly water bill is seventy-five, a three percent increase in March, it'd go up to seventy-seven, twenty-five, so it's two dollars and twenty-five cents. It does about the same as it goes through about two, two dollars, two thousand and fifty cents a quarter. And at the end of the year, it would equivalent, the equivalent of twelve point six rate increase to us at the end of the year. Then you go into the second year out, it goes up. So a seventy-five dollar customer, two years out is a ninety-five dollar customer. And it seems, you know, the things we could play with, you know, we said, this is the range we want to be in. We do have, we have to be ready is to pay that premium, I mean, that, those funds at that point two years out, but we'll be building money at the same time. So we would have, you know, and that's the balance. We're trying to like build enough surplus and reserve and then have enough cash flow to pay it. That three percent seems to do it from what we all looked at and what I've been working with here. So that being said, what I put on the agenda was phase two rate plan slash increased timeline. To really get it started, I think we should vote tonight to get into the March billing so we start having the quarters developing some of that surplus. The beauty of it is, we can see, because there's a couple of factors we have to play with. One, we'll talk more about the Hoffman Farms Project. Any business would like to get more customers to make more revenue, so that's a positive side of that project for us to consider. These numbers are pretty much factoring in current customer count, but if we had more customers, we could theoretically reduce that three percent rate increase as those customers come online. And we'll only know that as it happens, you know, but it's, but we can tweak it. As I say, now we built into our code the ability for the board to change the rate without changing the local law, so we have some flexibility. And I am hopeful that as, you know, we see projects being developed on maize land, we see more coming out in Nullwood, those are existing projects, and then a couple houses being built here and there. And then whatever Hoffman Farms is and what we end up doing with it, it could be another customer base for us.
And there's also another, another caveat.
What's that?
We currently have an application in for a two million dollar grant. This is to the Water Infrastructure Improvement Program. This year, the state put in a hundred million dollars for clean water and drinking water projects. Our application last year was not awarded a project, but because we were, we had a strong application, they moved us over for this year's consideration. So that should be, that's always, that's very competitive, but there is a chance that we could see a two million dollar or somewhat, which would help reduce this down as well.
Yeah, good. We've mentioned it in the workshops, thanks for bringing it up, Brent.
Yeah, I have a question. These numbers right here, does this include the differential for town customers versus village customers?
This is a village customer right here. I did one for a typical account, town customer, so a three percent. Really, a town customer, our current billing schedule is they pay twice the village rate. And this is what would happen to them, they go from one fifty to one seventy-two and then eight quarters out, they'd be one ninety-seven.
And these numbers are referenced into your other workbook page?
Yeah.
So that they all total to, to get that, I think that-
But on Brent's point, I mean, if a three point eight million got knocked down to one point eight, that'd be awesome. These numbers would get cut by more than half, you know, it'd be, and there'd be no need to develop that huge, that big repayment thing. The bad side is, infrastructure's expensive and the good side is, I think the village is being proactive and doing the right thing. You know, we still see those wild differences between gallons pumped versus the gallons sold and we're thinking this could help it. You know, we're picking that quadrant, like we said, it tends to be the more densely populated older quadrant of the village. Knock that and then see what we get after that. But anyway, that would be the logic and the thought process. Like I said, this is February, our next sequence of water bills. Well, you probably put them on the readers on the street in early March or first, second week of March.
Around our next meeting.
So I'd be more inclined if we could talk about some more and vote tonight. But my, I would make a motion that in the long awaited, anticipated phase two of the water project, the village needs to start further increasing its, its rates. And I would say, my recommendation would be pick three percent per quarter rate over the next eight quarters based on current customer count modeling and budgets. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The technical part is, we have to talk to our program essentially because we got, this three percent has to go on the base and then the consumption, the other-
It will have to sit.
Yeah, it's, it's not as simple. What we're talking about is here, the computer program, we have that five thousand, six hundred, ten gallon per quarter minimum for sixty-nine dollars.
The rate.
So that'll go three percent.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be like seventy-one dollars, whatever, then, then the flow rate would be-
It goes by per gallon, so that's what we need to come up with.
And then, but like I said before, to me, the big thing is, if we get some more customers in there too, we can knock some of the, the bigger customer numbers, the more we have to move rate into.
What do you hear about, just thinking Anderson comments, do you hear anything? Or is it just kind of languishing back there at this point?
We haven't heard any action.
And maybe I was just wondering.
Quite over town, I don't know what's going on.
Zero, huh? Okay.
And maybe for this board, it's, it's a funny thing, Jay, because when was that approved, maybe eight, ten years ago by the planning board?
I was on the planning board at that time.
But you were seeker twice, right?
Yeah.
You eventually, and then-
And then it was re, it was re-reviewed.
When the new owner came in.
Yes.
Yeah, because to me, the conundrum there is, you know, Hoffman Farms and this board are moving forward in the proper format, meaning either the town or the county are going to form zones of assessment or tech or water districts. Whereas Anderson, it's a hybrid, it's part in the village and part not in the village. So technically, I think, and the way we would interpret it, that developer, that developer should also pursue either a zone of assessment or a water district, which could segue us into something else or annexation, you know, where we, the village took legal possession, not ownership, but where we extended our boundaries and then they would by default be in a village water district, you know, so. So those options will kick around in a few minutes. Okay, I think we go over that, I think we, okay. Thank you, everybody. Let's see. So we did water phase two update, rate plan increase. I'm wondering, since CT Mail is out there, anything you need to update us on?
Can I ask you a few questions?
I brought my boards and stuff, just in case you question.
Pardon me?
I brought my board, on the solar project.
Solar? Yeah. We might be, yeah, I think we're-
We're probably okay with that for now, aren't you?
Yeah. I'd rather move, you'd be free to leave if you want, Robert. I got to move to some, since I was ill and chilling out last January for the calendar year kickoff meeting, I had a few items that hadn't been on the agenda, pulled just because I wanted to be able to explain to myself instead of having Brent have to figure out what I was talking about here. A couple, I might have been touched on at the last meeting, but with, there's a new town supervisor and we've had some meetings with them and one of the concepts that's kicking around, we've had some introductory meetings I'll call and I've talked to some of the board members and so forth about it. But it's a solar farm concept. What it boils down to is there are these new state regulations that allow community distributed generation, essentially small pockets of generation instead of monster generating plants and so forth. And part of it is to design and build solar farms, but technically they're not an agricultural use and technically, from what I understand, the town zoning doesn't necessarily allow a solar farm. But that, a solar farm is into the larger array of solar panels. So we're talking with the town, again, it's on conceptual and early stage planning, but right now we allow the fire company to have an easement and generate power and saving them about five or six thousand dollars a year in electricity costs. And we're looking at, can we use some more in our open well fields that we could put panels out there? But the question, a couple of questions, one is, what would the legal format be? I'm not so convinced that I just want to be a landlord renting land. If we do something, we find a model that works, I'd rather have it be a consortium. The concept is, you could build a two megawatt solar generating system that the town and the village could net meter off so we could pay our electrical costs through net metering. And then there would be energy left over, but not enough to run the whole village residents or the town residents, you know? And that's the catch twenty-two, like, okay, what do you do with that excess? And there are restrictions and guidelines within the program and those are like the devil in the detail things right now, but right now I just want to keep you updated. And, you know, with the town, I think personally the town is more interested in leasing land from us at a rate, and right now the going rate when you do research and when they talk to farmers, it's a thousand dollars an acre, which would help, but I don't think it's that great. Yeah, I'd rather be, you know, if we could project what the energy savings cost would be. I ran some models, we spend about in gross, non-streetlight, after streetlight money, about twenty-four thousand dollars in general electricity from pumping wells to the lights we're under right now and so forth. So there is a pretty good savings if we could net meter, that's about two tax points to us. But the question is, like we said, details and it almost seems if we move into it, like we have a water operator, we'll need a sewer operator, will we need a solar, somebody, it's, it's more than just somebody on the board babysitting animals this week, it's a bit of a project. So I was telling the town, they should fund somebody, you know, part-part timer or somebody that could help us a little bit. But I just wanted to run that out there. Another thought I had is, as we all know, we share the new highway garage with the town. And as we always state and want to remind the public, our village taxpayers already pay into that garage, so it's, it's both of our garages, you know? Our highway department tends to think it's a town garage and they're parked and there's tenants, but that's not the case. But it brings up the question anymore now, when I drive by our old highway garage, so to speak, it's a T-one-eleven siding, it's been whacked a few times here and there, the paint's peeling, the trim's a little rough. Either we spend some money and make it look a little better or we consider taking it down or taking part of it down. I'm not giving recommendations, I thought you guys could drive by, take a look at it. I'm not giving recommendations. I thought you guys could drive by, take a look at it, see what you think. Maybe some of it could come down. There's pole barn additions to the core building that maybe could come down. I know one year, we had through the corrections program, there is access to free labor. If we buy paint materials, the convict crowd comes around and they can do light maintenance. I think we had, I think what they were doing one year for us, kind of like some cleanup stuff. But it seems like scraping and painting could fall into that category if we decide to repair things rather than spend a lot of our own money on it. We can buy the materials and have them do it. It's a thought. The other one, like I hinted at with water discussion, the annexation concept. The problem the village has is if one looks at the collapse after the Great Recession of real estate values, we went from a tax assessment of over $200 million to down to about 188. And we're bouncing back, but we're still not up to $200 million yet. And we get our money by charging X dollars per thousand. It'd be nice if we had more thousands in tax base to get the money from. It's like the water rate thing. The more folks you have, you could charge less money to get a similar gross return. And the question is how do you do that? The village law does have circumstances and direction on how you do it. And we might have an opportunity. I've floated it once or twice to the Hoffman Farm principals and to the new town supervisor. But I'd like us all to get more serious and think about it because the Hoffman Farm project is really essentially vacant land. There's really no residents there that really would be involved. And it could be a boon for us in that the water issue, we would provide water. We could plow, we could do something. And we would get, the build out there is, the plant is 102 units. If you take $300,000 per unit, you can do the math, it could be significant. Now, on the other side, there are costs to give those services, but it's, but it could be something to look at. And then the Anderson Commons side, that's the project over on the Fisk Basset Lane quadrant over there. Part is in the village, but most of it's in the town. And it does raise all these complexities. Okay, the part in the village, we can give water to you, but then the part in the town needs to make a district. Who's going to plow it, different things. So there are, I think, good reasons for the developers to do it. The downside is like all people, they don't want to pay taxes. So they're like, okay, why should we pay village taxes when we can build something that would just be charged town taxes? But the answer on my part would be, you would be part of the village. You would automatically get the services we provide. And that's, somehow we have to keep the pressure and talk with it. But there is some indication at the town that they'd be interested. Because in the end, I think it would help the village with sustainability. It would be, we, we need to get that tax base up there. And we don't want to be charging more taxes on the existing tax base. If we had more of a pie to charge a little less from, it'd be better for us. Again, it's more of a high level concept and brainstorm and see what you think. Then one down in the south neighborhoods, we, I call it the Route 9 Firehouse Lane traffic options with New York State. To me, there's a horrendous situation down there from Firehouse Lane was built, whatever it was, 20, 30 years ago. It was built off a 90-degree angle from Amherst. And it just makes for trouble. It's like cars can't really turn. I mean, it's hard enough to make left turns with the traffic. But then the offset is a little confusing. And you've got some pretty busy businesses there on the corners, you know, the farm market, the copy shops, the deli, a lot of action all right around there. Many, many moons ago, the village was moving to try to do something. And the state said that they would take the position. The village had to buy a piece of private property from one owner on the east side of Route 9. It looks like prior to our time here, that was attempted, but it totally fell through. And then the problem as I see it is somehow I think we need to remake the argument. It's a state intersection, you know, how, why is it the village has to buy the land? And part of the deal too was the village had to do the engineering and all these costs, which, you know, quite frankly, right now and probably even then, they couldn't do. So that's why it's like it is. So I thought maybe we'd reinvigorate something. If one of the trustees wanted to take a little leadership on that and just look at what is known, what the state could do now, if there's some better option. But these traffic light situations, they're incredibly expensive. And then on top of it, if we had to buy the land and different things. But when I think back on the Kelly Road things with the town, I'm pretty sure the state just did all that. They didn't have to change road configurations, but, you know, they put the light and so forth.
I actually think that project's on, I think that the short term, long term and mid-range, Kentucky Dutch's kind of transportation plan that they worked out with the DOT for funding, I think they're on the mid, mid or long term for that particular project. It's not a priority project, but it is listed.
Yeah, because Brent and I went to a meeting, was it two, two months ago or something, with another acronym, PC, DCT, Kentucky Dutch's County Transportation something. Yeah, it's really an offshoot of Dutch's County Planning, right? Where they, it's more transportation based. But anyways, it's a problem. We need to address it. But unfortunately, we're all handcuffed with these tax caps and so forth. We can't run out with a big check and do it overnight. An idea for whoever might think of it as a pet project and can jump into it.
I'll, I'll make a few phone calls. I mean, I'm wondering if we didn't try to add a little bit of weight to the argument because of the difficulty sometimes that the fire personnel, the emergency personnel have getting out of there and turning north, you know, because of the, the angle, the alignment angle. So maybe we can, you know, maybe pose that as a question too, maybe get them out of that long range to a near-term priority, maybe. Well, I'll make a few phone calls. I'll let you know.
Thanks. Let's see, solar farms. So those are ideas on the big level. On a smaller level, number five, LED light conversion. We, maybe two or three meetings ago, we talked about how Central Hudson had some tariff clearances now where they're moving on, they could provide us with LED lights. And we had some concerns and we took some positive steps. We reconfigured some of their understandings and they actually installed four LED lights right out here. And the good news is we all liked them and we haven't had anybody come in and say they don't like them.
I think they look pretty good.
Yeah, they're, to me, they're lower profile and they're not as glaringly off casting light. You know, they're, it's more direct down. The intensity looks good. The numbers they show.
The temperature of the lights looks okay too.
Yeah, that was the biggest thing. So we were reluctant a couple of months ago to jump into it. We reframed it in terms of a pilot to them, which they responded to positively. And again, at workshop, we kept it around and it seemed like the board's overall sense was they liked them. So the way the program is worded, if we concur, as the high-pressure sodiums and the mercury vapors, different things we have fail, they'll replace them with LED. And it's not a direct cost to us. And then we do net the reduced energy consumption. That's, that thing goes up, so. It would probably take a while. In other words, we're not going to go out and change every light in the village overnight. And that's a different concept and we wouldn't like that way. But at least I don't think we would if we let them go slowly. So what they had was a blanket LED street lighting authority order. Give you the concept. I think we all looked at it once. I think they can pull this up, actually. Let's just.
There's actually a webinar on February 24th with the Mid Hudson Street Light Consortium.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was listening, but not really. Could you say that again, Brent?
There's a webinar on February 24th sponsored by the Mid Hudson Street Light Consortium.
I sent it to you today.
Yeah, okay.
So they can answer more questions too on that.
Let's see. What time's the webinar? What time is it?
8:30 to 9:45, 8:00 AM. I'd be happy to share this information with you.
Yeah, please. Yeah, this is what they sent us back in October when they were talking about that the Public Service Commission granted them the approval to order, to lease out LED streetlights. And they give over here a little savings projection and so forth. And we have, I think the count of what, 288 streetlights out there, if I remember right, Steve? And then part of it was this item we all looked at. And I think now we're closer to working on it. Essentially, you are hereby authorized to make changes specified below to the street lighting service for all street lighting districts within, let me say, Village Red Oak in accordance with a resolution adopted, provided by law. And then all Rate A streetlights which fail shall be replaced with LED equivalent fixture. What that means is some of our lights are our own, like in Abrams Park and different areas. They wouldn't be Rate A lights, so they wouldn't touch them. It's just the lights that are out in the main thoroughfares. So I think we're looking at the pilot. I think we're okay with letting them do it. So I would offer a resolution as a motion. Let's see, make a motion that the village board allow me to sign a blanket LED street lighting authority order. And essentially, we would be changing our Rate A lights as they fail with LED equivalent fixtures. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Thank you. And then I stuck in there, item E, it's actually underwater, but it should be its own category. Budget workshops, like we said, just for the board. As budget officer, I have to have something to the clerk to circulate to everybody by March 20th. And then it gets reviewed and goes out by March 31st. And we have to adopt or not by, we have to have a public hearing by April 15th and then adopt or not by May 1st. So that's our timeline. So we are February 8th tonight. I'm recommending that we set up Thursday night workshops where we hang out. You know, we put our model up on the screen that I have and plug in numbers and see where. The horrific news for us is we have 0.12% to work with. And I'm not saying 1.2%, I'm saying 0.12%.
What are we going to do at all?
And in the real world for us, it's about $1,400. The downside for us is probably every one of our contracts spend more than, you know, those different contracts we planned and thought were smart at projecting about 1.5% increases. We now have 10% of that to deal with. So it's some big questions for us. You know, on the pilot side, remember this board, this village had debt owed to the fire company for some unpaid things from years past. And we were paying that off at $10,000 over and above the contract per year, $10,875, if I'm right. That goes away this year. So we have like 10,800 there. So that gives us, let's say, 11, 12,000. And then we have to work, you know, what are other areas, what are we going to do? So more gray hair, but. So I would ask that, I guess we should just make a motion. The 11th would be, it looks like it could be that Hoffman Farm project workshop. But after that, it sounds like it'd be the 18th, the 25th, if we just do a rotating schedule. They might not all be long. They might not all happen, but at least we can book them into our calendars and.
And that goes into March?
Yeah, the deadline, I have, we done March 20th, so I don't know how it cycles.
So the March 17th?
The 3rd to 10th and the 17th. Yeah, okay. So, and we might get it done before that, we might not. And we always have to entertain that option of agreeing to pass local law to exceed the tax cap and rescind it. Those are things, as we look at the numbers, we can decide that. But we probably in the March meeting, look to pass that sort of a local law and then talk about retracting it later. Our goal would be to not do anything more damage to the taxpayers than we have to. But on the other hand, I did check, remember the promised, remember last year, the work we did on the long-range planning for sharing and consolidating in different services? And then we have to stay within the cap, the county has to stay within the cap, there's all municipalities. And everybody thought those checks would roll out about November, around election season last year. They didn't come. So I missed that again. It looks like they are due to be released shortly. It's not a huge windfall for anybody, but it's still in the pipeline to be printed. That comes from the state of Newark. It's nothing to do with us. But we did our part to comply. I can't think of the acronym for the IEP. And that's something we did, the efficiency plan. I forget the first letter, but we projected out how we would try to save money. And we're complying with it, which is good. But anyway, so motion for budget workshops starting February 18th, Thursday, 7 o'clock upstairs.
There's a second.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I think that's all I've got. Gentlemen and lady, anything from the board as far as? I don't think we need executive session tonight. Anything else for you guys? We could go to public comment. Any public comment back there? If you could, well, we would like, if we could do a little directing from the director's chair. If you could spin and if you, if you have something to ask, if you could clearly state your name and whether you live in the village or not, and if he could spin the camera on you. Or if you feel.
If we made anonymous.
But if you have any questions, but if you.
On the LED lights, I like that idea.
Yeah, let's, let's let the guy focus on you so you make your, okay. And you are, sir?
George Beekman.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm in the village.
Okay.
Let's see. On the state checks, we didn't get them in 15. We're not going to see them in 16. So I wouldn't care a damn what they tell you.
Oh, yeah?
It's a lie. You go and be planning that Hoffman thing. Again, we're the only two members of the village that seem to care. The rate has to be whatever the outsiders pay. I don't want to see any bending on that on the part of the board.
Well.
We will fill a room up if that happens.
You can. You can feel free.
We'll get them here, but right now, nobody else cares at this point. So given that that's the case, we represent the entire village. Unfortunately, that's the case for you, but.
Well, let me put you on the spot. Why, what, what's your basis on that statement?
It's going outside the village. It's not fair to the other ones. And we're still missing half our water. And somebody's got to pay for this huge infrastructure we have to put in in order to enable us to have it. And it's cheaper for them because otherwise, our only option they've got is to build a water plant out there. And that's probably $3, $4 million. So again, if you can afford a $300,000, $400,000 home, I guess you could afford to pay for a $4 million water plant.
Well, I would be more than happy to talk to you, but let's keep the discussion going for two minutes. Because of the flip side, at some point in the past, and this is something we talk about all the time on the board. At some point in the past, the village decided to extend outside its boundaries to supply water to people, which is really not technically correct. We can only really sell to village residents. The question I always have is who paid to run the pipe? I think I know the answer. You know, pipes ran X number of miles out. We do the billing. If those mains break up to the curb valves, we would have to fix them. We know there's, we can't find them any easements. So they're not our streets or highways to go work on and dig up and a lot of party. So there is a huge exposure dollar-wise to the village for the current customers that are outside the village. The project with Hoffman Farms is it would be all brand-new in-the-ground infrastructure. The discussion on the table now is a district would be formed, which would be Dutch's County Wastewater Authority creating what's called a zone of assessment. They would do administration, maintenance. So I think that's the current proposal, this concept to the village board. And we sit as the village board as the board of water commissioners. So it would be one master meter and the village would have no exposure to repair anything past the master meter. And to me, that has some financial value. Right now, if you're up in the Willowbrook, you know, past the car washes up in the back there where a lot of these customers are in the town, we, we have like an unfathomable financial exposure to find out and repair something that breaks out there. So this is defining and limiting, in my opinion, our exposure. And quite frankly, we have a mixed opinion on the board about that. We're not sure.
Right. We're still pumping, servicing and delivering to that point. We're losing half our water. They're going to get 100% of what they're paying for.
Could you say it again? I didn't hear the last part.
They are getting 100% of what they're paying for. We're getting 50% of what we're paying for. The reason the water, probably Bullard Park has water is because the original pipes of the village came from out there and came. of the village came from out there. It came down Route Nine, it's still in the ground alongside the road. So it's probably a deal to bring the water down right past them and fed, and fed that area, because that's the only quadrant that's really got outside the village water.
Well, we go south on nine...
Not that far, but usually the water, the reservoir used to be out on one-ninety-nine.
Yeah. Well, like you said, it's, um, in the end, there are financial and business considerations, and nobody's going to give it away, I'll tell you that. And, uh, it's...
But you're also creating, creating a precedent.
Well...
Supplying outside sources of water.
Well, we'd be correcting errors, quite frankly, and, um, it, that's the positive side. And, and the bigger picture, the town created, traditionally, we're designing the Centers of Green Space Plan, and they're trying to promote these new types of developments, TNDs. And, um, in their progressiveness, they created the districts or the, the concept, but you need the infrastructure to get there. I view us in the uncanny position of being like the old Gulf States. We have the oil, which is water. They don't, so I think we have a position, but it's a...
They pay the going rate.
Well, I would agree that they would pay the proper...
They're still, in other words, they're outside the village.
Pardon?
They're outside the village.
Yeah, well, I disagree.
They could build a water system there if they want one.
Hmm, no, they could. And it is...
And that would be great. I have a problem with them doing it.
And nobody, we're not making concessions.
They have to look at their numbers and crunch them on their side.
They could. And they're, they're in the business of making money, and we're in the business of trying to expand at the right rate, the water customer base that could help the current customers. And that's, that's what I was trying to illustrate before.
Yeah, I understand both sides of your argument, but I think the liability we take on in another quadrant of town, of service of both area, is a big, big-ticket item to look at.
Suffice to say, George, we're having the same conversations between us. I mean, there's, there's no consensus here about how, how it should be, you know, charged and the rate should be established at that point. But, I mean, there's some of the things, you say, okay, fine, we won't be responsible for any of that infrastructure. They'll, you know, supply the master meter and take care of everything beyond that. But the village, in order to be able to sell to anybody else, we had to do work and invest money to refresh our wells and everything. So there's a give and take on this thing, that we have to make sure that, that we're not giving it away.
You've got the expense of the book up with the town water system, which never happened. We've got a new tank going in. We want to decommission the other tank. We've got forty percent water loss. You know, I...
Those rates would be reflected in whatever rate we sell to Hoffman, because that would be phased, too, which, you know, they'll, they'll see the same whatever rate increase percentage of that. But you're right, too, there is a certain value to our existing infrastructure that we have to take into consideration. And like J and Ed both said, you know, we, we debate this thing.
And, and...
I, I, I understand you talk among yourselves with it, and the same thing, but I'm just, my position would be, the board has to take a tougher position on it.
Well, I don't think you'd say tougher. I, I, here's what I would say. I appreciate your input, but we have taken a harsh stance in that we have, what I would call, we're entitled to return on investment. In other words, we got a five to eight million dollar system in the ground, you know, and we're not going to give that away. And then we got the water in the ground that goes through our five to eight million dollar system, we're not going to give that away, you know? The question is, the one problem I have, quite frank, is that twice rate that was created, you know, what's the basis on that? And we have this huge exposure out there. If something breaks out there, but in this case, we're not sitting with that same exposure, but we're not going to trade away the return on investment.
We may get extra money from this process in order to find the problem on the other end. Look at it that way.
Yeah.
But you're also right, too. I think, you know, some of the things that we're discussing is the precedent here, you were talking about as well, and, um, you know, what happens to the other customers at some point. So there's a lot of discussion going on.
And these can be converted to real numbers. It's not just hypothetical. They have a hundred customers, we know what they're going to use per day. We have a math on us, you know, we're looking at that.
If we keep playing around, I mean, we've got a rate over here, rate over here, rate over here, and, and so I think that the simpler, the more cogent math, we can, you know, put, put a value to what we're giving them. And I, I think that's where, you know, when the board will kind of come together, when we get to a point where we can agree what the value is of providing them water down there.
In a sense, too, George, is, I'm very familiar with negotiation. You know, the developer plays hardball, but things you said are true, you know, they, and like I said, we have the product, we have the infrastructure, and where do we go? And what I tell some of my board members, even this conversation and the ones we have, we're sitting in a heated building with the lights on, at the village's expense, talking about what to charge them. That should be even the rate, somehow, you know, where the time we spend, and we brought that up at the last workshop. And we know, even if there's one master meter, and we charge for return investment, we charge for what I call overhead, we charge for increased costs, we're still going to be spending time on it. Somebody's going to be calling Cindy or her, you know, we have to build that in, and we're trying to get that number. And that's one of the meetings coming up. And they could go away and say, you know, we'll build our own well and do our own thing, which would be okay, too. But on the other hand, part of me says I'd like to get more customers to keep my rates a little more contained. Um, but that's, we're working on it. Thank you, sir. Anything else? That being said, I think we're about at that point where we can move to pay some bills. I'd say motion to pay bills after the audit.
Some of them?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And, um, unless I missed something on the agenda, I think we're done.
I can make a motion that we adjourn this evening.
I'll second it. All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.